Welcome. We are in the new year with an exciting 2018 that I'm looking for my areas. 2018 January 8th agenda. And I believe we should be connected now. Meeting is being recorded. Welcome to the select board and we'll start looking at consent agenda. And the town departments warrants. Minutes for 10:30 and 11:18. And then we have extensions of hours at Woods Hill Table on the 17th from 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM with last call at 10:30 PM. It's a 24 Commonwealth Avenue. We have a gift acceptance from the Concord children, several of them, which we are always grateful for, she conquered children's center for $1,800. The playground at Rickley gift account and the Alpat School PTP for $1,000 for the recreation scholarship fund. And then we have one day special license request for the Concord Artists Association on the 3rd of February from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. 37 Lexington Road for wine and malt beverages and for Orca and Bob Bassi on the 18th of January from 5 to 6:30 PM, also 37 Lexington Road, wine and malt beverages. And finally, we have a draft proclamation. Like proclamation that we are looking forward to meeting and celebrating. Has anybody else want to read it or I'm happy to put it into the record? This is on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Concord. Our proclamation is access to performing arts day. Whereas, and this is on behalf of 51 Walton Street. Whereas the building at 51 Walton Street in Concord has stood as a landmark since its construction as an armory in 1887, maybe we didn't know that. And whereas the Concord players began using the hall in what was then known as the Veterans' Building for theatrical performances in 1919, almost 100 years ago. Whereas for 45 years since it was leased from the town by the friends of the performing arts in Concord, 51 Walton has been home of the Concord Players, Concord Band, Concord Orchestra and Opera 51, all highly regarded amateur performance groups that attract audiences and participants from around the region. And whereas Concord's long history of cultivation of the arts is recognized as an important aspect of its cultural, its unique cultural and social fabric. Whereas the 2005 comprehensive long range plan includes goals to protect, maintain and foster Concord's existing historic and culturally resources to support our new one, citing 51 Walton specifically. And whereas 51 Walton now needs numerous updates to improve building accessibility and to enhance the physical environment for performers and audiences. And a capital campaign called Access 51 has been initiated to raise funds for these purposes. Therefore, we, the select boards, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2018, to the access to Performing Arts Day in the town of Concord and encourage Concord citizens and all patrons of the arts to support Access 51 specifically and performing arts in general through their participation, attendance and contributions. Claim this, the 8th of January, 2018.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think there'll be an arts theme to part of this agenda.
Can I just make one minor point of order here? The fourth whereas.
You guys here, you can come to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Hi, Peter Seibert, Haywood Mill Road. I'm on the board of 51 Walton and I thank the select board for your proclamation and invite you all to attend the celebration on January 21st at 51 Walton, 2:00 PM. There's just one minor edit here. In the fourth whereas clause, there should be an and following the final semicolon just to keep consistency.
There we go. Well, thank you. We can never be, we can always, we can always be better. If you get that, sure will. Thanks.
And thank you.
Thank you. So, Peter Seibert, 21st?
Yeah.
Is your town manager? I bet we have a full report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roll into the storm last Thursday, the public worked through, worked through the day on Thursday and then into the night, of course, and got the pavements, pavement of the major roads bare by midnight. They returned on Saturday at 2:00 AM and then again on Sunday at 2:00 AM to remove the snow from the commercial areas. With the high winds and cold temperatures, we did prepare for a shelter in case we lost power, but it turned out there wasn't a single customer without power despite the high winds and snow. And the CMLP reported that, attributed that to their investment in solid wiring, good equipment. Let me see, the water department had to respond to a water main break on Sandy Pond Road on Friday, which was kind of difficult. That did leave some customers on that street without water for about four or five hours, but they did, they managed to make the repair. I mentioned re-roofing Harvey Wheeler Building last time and there's been a delay in receiving the tiles. So again, you'll see the scaffolding up, but we don't expect to receive the roofing tiles. We had the opportunity to have a two-tone tiles, two different batches of tiles, but we prefer them all to match. So we're going to accept the delay of three weeks in delivering the tile.
Where are they coming from?
I think it was Texas, but I'm not entirely sure. The legal winning voters continue their mapping the road to town meeting series this week on Thursday at the Harvey Wheeler Center at 7:30 is how town meeting works and how to work at advocacy at public hearings. So that continues their series. Erin Stevens, the public information officer, would like to have a photo contest for the best photo to be on the cover of the annual town report. Select board gets to decide which is the best picture, but so you'll be the judges for that photo contest. She's making call for photos to be considered on the cover of the annual town report. Cafe Nero that was, is in the process of renovating the property at 53 Main Street has continued or asked for continuance of its hearing scheduled for this month to March 15th. So that's before the Board of Appeals, it will come up on March 15th. Property taxes, the treasurer reported that many people paid their third and fourth quarter property tax bills before the end of calendar year 2017, which was appropriate, but some added additional money and made further contributions, but that, and that is not permissible because the taxes haven't been assessed for fiscal 2019, so those funds will have to be returned. Library director reported that 310 CCHS students attended the student study day to prepare for midterm exams. Library was open on Sunday, it was unusual. And once, we do that once a year and they had over 300 students there, which was great.
As somebody who thought it was there, we are very appreciative.
Well received, I guess, by the students. And finally, we're in the process of hiring a second network engineer to help run the broadband service. And the town of Bedford is interested in sharing that person to, because they have some network needs as well. So we drafted an intermunicipal agreement, sent it over to Bedford. And if they are amenable to those terms, it will come back to this board. The two, the board, the select boards in each town will have to vote to approve in agreement that allow, would allow us to share just that one person.
Does Bedford also have its own?
They have their own IT director, but they don't have a network specialist.
But they have their own high speed internet in Bedford?
No, no, this would just be for their in-town.
Just their in-town.
In-town network, but they could use the help, so we're working collaboratively. That's all I have to report.
Okay, let's see, I think we are past our 7:05 PM deadline to start our public hearing. Change of manager and change of director for the Concord Rod and Gun Club. Are you folks geared to that?
This is Bill.
Wait, do you want to identify yourselves?
Yes.
I'm William Eldridge of Newton with the Concord Rod and Gun Club.
And I'm Henry Dane, the president. Bill is our candidate to become the statutory manager under our line of beer license and we will take up as little other time as you allow us. I think all the paperwork, I'm told, is complete.
We move to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
That's our hearing.
I learned a long time ago when the judge says yes, you run for the door.
And your alacrity was impressive. And I had the privilege to speak to Mr. Eldridge a little bit before we started the select board meeting, but welcome, and I'm sure you've been in town for a long time.
Yes.
And I know that we, I saw that we had a relatively uneventful set of reports back from the, from the police department. Do any of the myself board members have questions?
I don't have any questions, but just for the record, just a little bit about yourself and your background.
Yes, I've been active in the club for some time. As I mentioned, I'm from duty. I've been alternate bartender, bar manager at the club for some time and pretty low experience in that, so I'm looking forward to taking over the full responsibility of it.
Thank you. And it's pretty much an annual change. It occurs for the gun club every year, which is not anything out of the ordinary.
You drew the long straw this year?
I'm sorry?
You drew the long straw this year?
Yes.
The application is in order.
Application's in order. Police had no issues with manager or the directors. No issues.
Okay, great. And does the public have any comments or questions?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion?
I move to approve William Eldridge as manager of record at Concord Rod and Gun Club at 74 Strawberry Hill Road. The manager must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as their main occupation and must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours per week during the hours when alcoholic beverages are sold.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any further discussion?
I move to approve Henry Dane, Edward Rolf, Curtis Coppersmith, John Colas, Andrew Kellner, Dale Chays, Reed Holden, Dylan Kialfi, David Wood and Kevin McNamara Jr. as officers of the Concord Rod and Gun Club located at 74 Strawberry Hill Road contingent upon A, B, C, C approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can run.
Thank you.
If you think you have anything else, you know where to reach out.
At the Rod and Gun Club, right? Or other places. Okay. Now we have amend the hours of operation for West Concord Liquors, called 16 Main Street. Is there anybody here from West Concord Liquor Store? And this is a fairly straightforward extension of hours on Sundays to 8:00 PM, 10, or I guess it's from noon, and then make it earlier to 10:00 AM and closing at 8:00 PM.
Let me also, please pardon, the police department, an affirmation that they have no power.
An affirmation. And I also, I just wanted to note that this is not their one of many stores in Concord that have similar hours, so this is not a particularly outsized request in any one.
And just for my own interest, why, could this be a consent agenda item?
I don't know that you've done a change of hours on the consent. You could, if you're comfortable doing it. It's not a public hearing, so you don't have to take public feedback on it, but we have historically approved the change of hours as part of a business.
It's going to affect their annual license and they'll get reissued on the license. If there was an extension of hours, like for example, Woods Hill Table, that's a one-time thing.
One-time good.
Yeah. Permanent thing. And then A, B, C, C will get a copy of just the new hours and stuff, so it's a little bit more formal, but doesn't require public hearing.
Thank you. Do I hear?
Yes, I move to approve the request to amend the Sunday hours of operation for West Concord Liquors. The new hours of operation are Sunday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. And next up is a discussion of the White Pond Advisory Committee charge. And we only have a draft charge here. Is there somebody from White Pond Advisory Committee here? I think they're up the committee members, you can review this. And Alice, this is a committee you have a long and faithful observer as ladies on to.
I had to provide you originally. So I just want a little background, is the White Pond Advisory Committee was established in 1973 and it was to address the concerns of the neighborhood for neighborhood impacts. It was to include the review of projects, construction projects that may have an impact on the pond system for our neighbors. It's an unusual community. It was originally designed as a summer home bungalow community and over time, these homes have become year-round and permanent and sometimes even enlarged quite a bit. And so new issues have arisen over the years, the city bureau charge. In 1973, I think it was envisioned that this would have a sunset of the committee and the neighborhood is, has been strongly engaged for, you know, ongoing since the 1970s. But it was time to review the charge and I think the beginning of the discussion of a new charge came from when Mike was chair and he, well, we were moving over to the new website, looking to improve on and ensure that all the committee charges were still accurate. So the White Pond Advisory Committee took it under their, their leadership to really think about what this committee is about, what it means now, when to take stock in where they've come from, and then to be more forward thinking about where they want to go. So they drafted a charge. There was a lot of discussion that went into the development of the charge, meeting with town departments. And then at the end of that period, they shared it with me, I had some edits sent back, then we had got input from the natural resources office, the planning department from Chris. And I think that's the version that you all have in front of you now is the revised charge. And, you know, Carmen is currently the chair and if you want to introduce yourself and just say a couple words about White Pond, that'd be great.
Carmen Jacques, 38 Shore Drive. And this 1976 charter just said, referred to things, we didn't know what it was referring to. Nobody knew. And it just was really outdated. There was a lot more activity around the pond and use of the pond that they didn't take into account. I actually met someone who was on the committee in 1976 and I showed her the copy of their charter and she couldn't remember what things referred to. So we worked hard on this and I love the edit that you did because I think it made it more succinct and it made it kind of more official sounding. So I'm, I think it was great. I just have three questions actually on it.
Okay.
One was just actually the very last under committee membership. The very last sentence was that the committee will meet normally monthly, will normally meet monthly and crossed out the fourth Wednesday of the month. And I wondered why that, you know, that change was done because people are very used to knowing that we meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month. We don't get a big crowd usually unless something is happening, but I just wondered why that was crossed out.
I think that was my suggestion. We normally specify the day of the week on which committees meet, it's at their discretion, so you don't have to change the day of the week, but it isn't typical for the board to specify the day people must meet. It's up to the committee, it's up to the committee to decide when it's most convenient.
But on the website, you know, when you look at the committee, they'll say usually like.
Yeah.
You know, rail trail the first Thursday of the month, so I just.
So we can still.
Okay, all right, that's great. And then under purpose, which was more towards the beginning, the second item was provide input to help ensure that water quality at minimum meets Massachusetts water quality standards for swimming and recreational waters. And the only question I had about that is, I assume that reservoir is the highest quality of water and I wondered where swimmer's falls, falls in a list of quality.
I can answer that question. This was an edit that gave the both planning and NRC. So I'm really interested in understanding water quality standards.
Water bodies' work and sustainability. And they're not necessarily drinking water, drinking water standards. So I think they're, that's the highest standard you can have and I think class A would be the highest swimming standard you could have. So I think they weren't expecting the water to be at drinking water standards.
So swimming is a high quality.
Yes.
For the state. Okay, now, that was just something I didn't know and I had to ask. And there's only one other question. Under community responsibilities.
Under community responsibilities.
Number three, make recommendations as needed to the select board concerning staff and resources dedicated to the, we had to the health and use of the pond, watershed and trails was added, and that's great, but health was taken out. And I questioned that a little bit because when you say, you know, staff and resources dedicated to the use of the pond, watershed and trails, maybe health is implied in that that you're going to keep it in good order with what you do, but to me, health, especially because we've had these wounds from cyanobacteria, is a little bit different. It's kind of, it's another item to me than those others. I think those others are great, perfect, but I just wondered about eliminating health in there.
I think we need to consider health. I think that the expertise on the board isn't consistent from year to year or decade to decade. If we truly wanted to have a health of the pond that's scientifically valid, we'd need to make sure that we had citizens on board with qualifications and health determinations. And I think that's a difficult bar for us to reach. You may make recommendations anyway in your charge as you're studying. I know you've been to cyanobacteria, but I think that the charge will extend way beyond your tenure and interest to future, maybe a decade out from now, the issues will be very different. So I'm not sure that we would want, first you have an input on whether we rely on the volunteer committee for scientific health analysis?
That would be unusual. Sometimes you do have the benefit of someone or several members with some skills, but you can't always count on that, as you know.
Well, they would recommend if a study is continued or renewed or, you know, something like they always have been.
So this is still says, oh, that make recommendations concerning resources dedicated to use of the pond, watershed. So in order, you can make recommendations that we need to study bank erosion of such an area. We may, you know, make a recommendation that we do a cyanobacteria, you know, monitoring program, but it wouldn't be in the charge. If the language is broad enough, I think, other people have thoughts about whether the language covers it or is there an edit or refinement necessary?
Covers broad sense without having to be a requirement. So I'd say that's for the subject.
And I think by adding the watershed, I mean, I think you can, it seems even broader than perhaps the charge was at a previous point, so.
Because if we think of the pond, it's a whole area. Okay.
Sharing our wonders for the record, if it would be possible, since many people may not have the benefit of all the work that is dominated committee or house, that could be summarized as significant changes that are taking place in the charter, is that possible to do?
Significant changes to the charge?
To the charge.
From the original one that was from the 70s?
It's considerable. The original, the original charge was really meant as a neighborhood empowerment charge that allowed the neighbors, as the neighborhood was changing and growing and developing from its early, you know, sort of camp atmosphere to a year-round neighborhood, there are a lot of issues that came up. Now that's a mature neighborhood of well-informed residents. The interest is now on protecting and preserving the natural environment that makes that neighborhood so unique. And so that's looking at how to protect the resource and what are the contributions to the pond from failing septic systems or lawn care chemicals. So there's a significant shift in the thinking from the original charge to what is actually happening now in the community. Do you have other things you want to add to that?
No, that's, that's true. The first one was very narrow. It just didn't take into account the full use of the pond, say by the town, the people of the town. So this is, this is, this is really lovely with the liquid revision. I think it just takes care of it. And actually, the committee wrote advice to homeowners handout, which we're going to get online. Carly LeVoy said she wants to put it online and with her department, where we go into more detail about use of chemicals, looking, be careful about runoff, your septics. If you're going to clear the land, replant it, use natives. She liked that a lot and Billy did too.
But I think you also, this year, took up, I wrote a checklist for homeowners looking to do, make alterations to their homes, kind of things that you'd expect to be able to review as a committee and then some decision-making points so that homeowners don't come in on knowing what was the first line of communication, which is a really helpful thing for.
That's what, we had people come in and they really didn't, we were, we weren't specific enough about what you need to have because we're not doing any of the building department does. We're really concerned with the land and the area and ecological. And they, they didn't come with, prepared and we felt that's our fault. We weren't specific enough and that's why we did this, this handbook.
I want to cite the committee for undertaking that, which was something I was hoping committees would do, you guys did and I noticed a lot of work. And Alice, you two, for your help, I'd give you now.
I sit there and listen.
I know, there's a lot of talking and actually I had never seen the original charter. I mean, when we actually looked at the original charter.
It'd be kind of scary, huh?
That's what are we doing here?
Well, this is, as Mike said, this is a wonderful, you know, it sort of reads as initially as a blueprint for what the citizenry was going to, you know, how they were going to form. It was almost the, you know, rules of caucus for the, for the committee and, you know, looking at where you guys grown in terms of just the expertise alone. And that's really adoption of your, of the neighborhood, which is. Well, I think for years they also worked on the Bruce Moon Rail Trail and how that they impacted pond and now they're both liaisons to each other's committees. It just grows.
It's really helpful because it's kind of scary, we're sitting there and we don't know what's happening. You know, we don't know the decisions to be made or the schedules or anything like that. So I'm actually the liaison to Bruce Moon Rail Trail and then I give them a report from us and it's helpful to them. It really feels good to have that connection with them.
For both protecting each other.
Yes, absolutely. And that we both are, we both have the same concerns.
So the trails committee as well, too, you know, we're looking to conclude the trails on our property along the pond, you know, the trails committee is completely involved with both committees, White Pond and Bruce Moon. Thank you. Thank you. Work well done. I wonder if we approve the new White Pond advisory committee charge and.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And here is yet another evolutionary step. Carleen, are you?
Yeah.
When you join us to discuss the.
Yep, and Jane. Jane O'Bagby.
Oh, and Jane?
Nice to see you.
The cultural district advisory committee, the next phase of another series of outgrowths of impressive effort in town.
Hi, my name's Carleen Hippel. I am a member of the West Concord Advisory Committee and a resident of Highland Street, 50 Highland Street. You would know Jane.
Jane O'Baggy, the executive director of Concord Chamber of Commerce.
We are here tonight because we are asking you to create two, one or two, and I think we should discuss that, local cultural councils to operate in concert with the mass cultural council arts districts that have been awarded in two different areas in the town of Concord. One is Concord Center, which happened a few years ago, I don't know exactly, and that was before your time.
2012.
2012. And then a couple of years ago, we got the designation for West Concord, which they named West Concord Junction. Part of the requirement of that. Part of the requirement of that designation was that there would be a partnership created. And those partnerships were created by Stephanie Stillman, then director of the Chamber of Commerce, to go through the application process, which was lengthy and intense. You would probably remember, in fact, you've signed a resolution to that effect. But those partnerships should have kept on in terms of both planning for that, for these two districts, and data collection, which is a very important part of what the MCC is looking for in concert with the legislation that created these arts districts. And so that hasn't happened yet. And so what I'm here before you today, so far Jane has been the person who has been the reporting agent. But she needs a whole network of support around her to take care of this. And so that's what I'm hoping to do with you today, is to work toward creating one or two of these councils.
And you've indicated a number of times that you're, is it open or interested in one or two? I'm very aware of the creation of the West Concord Junction, less so personally with the Concord Center. Is there, have the, have the two of you discussed what, I'm sort of trying to imagine, are we underway in having created either? Is there interest going forward?
Jane, do you, do you have a thought about, about that in terms of two? I have a thought in terms of having two separate ones. But I'm wondering what you think in that context, two separate local arts councils.
The cultural districts are quite different, both in terms of their location and their representation and the activities that go involved in those areas. So I would overall support her position of having two because I think you're really focusing on two different groups of residents in the areas. And they have very different needs and very different desires for what this cultural district should be. I think you can have one, but West Concord is very active. So two, unless there's a problem with it, I think it would work very well.
The only, the only reason we might consider having one is it's a lot of, it's a lot of work.
And a lot of people.
It's a lot of work and a lot of people. But the districts are so distinct that it's hard to imagine that the West Concord Village Junction District wouldn't get swallowed up a little bit into the, to the, to the primary Concord proper district. They're just so distinct and there are such different things happening in the two districts. And a completely different, maybe not completely different, but a largely different cast of characters. And so for that alone, I think, I think we should, I think you should create two. And if they falter, perhaps in the future, unite them. And there should be collaboration between the two anyway. And if you were to look at in your memo, there's a, there's a list provided by the MCC of the types of people who would belong to these and there's crossover. So, I mean, we don't, I suspect you don't want to assign too many committee assignments to the same person. But it's recommended, it says, you know, should be involved in the management of the district, a city or town representative, two or more artists, local nonprofits, local businesses. Those can all be distinct, except perhaps for the city or town representative. And then, and then also it mentions Chamber of Commerce. So it's not even recommending that Jane be that, that person. That might be Marsha Rasmussen, for example, who's already been very invested in this. We worked very closely on an arts project in the village to put up a mural between tea cakes and, and that was under the sort of, the idea of this, of this arts council that we created. It was sort of under that umbrella. And we applied to the MCC for that seed money, for that, for that mural.
So in essence, there's almost a virtual council forming in West Concord. The question, I guess I was asking also whether we have a similar genesis in Concord Center.
There's an informal committee that exists. It certainly would benefit from having another one in West Concord, I believe, because of the pure energy that goes on in West Concord, I think would roll over to Concord Center. There are a lot of reporting requirements being a cultural district. And I think having a more central, more localized would be useful. MCC wants to see the number of events you have, the number of people coming to the events. And it's just hard when you're trying to do it across the town with a single group of people, having it in two separate areas where people are more inclined to probably go to those events within the district, a little easier to track and to develop a description of and to communicate to MCC the success of those events.
So would the chamber have, will the Chamber of Commerce assign two people, one to each district?
I don't think that's possible since there was only one.
Well, yeah. My question is also about, you know, the role of the Chamber of Commerce in the district. I don't know what your real, like what your charge is, is you're basically funded by businesses in your area. So I don't know if, if the focus towards the cultural district is, you know, in their best interest. I guess we can't really speak to that, but then at the same time.
I can a little bit. I think that the Chamber of Commerce definitely has a role in these arts districts. I don't think the Chamber of Commerce would necessarily run these arts districts. These are, and it's a very good question, because these arts districts are considered to be the sparks of an economic engine that uses arts and culture and the vitality of those things to move, you know, one of the things that has to be measured is occupancy of buildings. Is this bringing people, is this bringing, you know, art artisans and craftspeople? You're supposed to actually count the number of artists in your district. So that, so they're clearly recognizing the economic engine of that and that is clearly aligned with what the chamber does. But to put it all in the hands of the chamber would be, I think, ignoring the other parts of this. And so I think it wouldn't be outside of what's reasonable to expect Jane to check in with both, but not to run both.
You know, I am hearing this discussion about why two. And I have to, I'm going to offer why I would take one council. As we try to think of our community as one community, West Concord is not a separate town to the town of Concord. We are administratively functioning as one, one town. We have to be bifurcated by that road. But I feel, I feel uncomfortable with there being two separate councils, each handling the downtown districts of the cultural districts. When they're saying reporting, we both have to report back up to the Massachusetts Cultural Council, that there's double reporting and double time. We need 10 people in two different, you know, community bases. I almost think that we would be better served by one council with broad representation, just as we do with all of our other boards and commissions. You know, our zoning board has representation from across towns. Our planning board, you know, the NRC, we need to be able to look at the town holistically and not just in one part of our town at a time. So what happens in West Concord affects a great deal of what happens in downtown Concord. And there's a lot of crossover. You want that growth, both the intersection of both cultural districts and the economic opportunities in both sides of Concord. And I worry about us separating that option if we are functioning as separate entities.
I think those are great points. Couple of things, and one I honestly don't know the answer to, and I should have checked on this before I came to you and I didn't think to, is that I don't know if there can be one. In other words, these went through separate and distinct processes with a whole fleet of the state's representatives coming and looking at each district in its own right. And because of that, I'm not sure that there has to be, that the requirement is that there's a body for each. Now, there are three or four other communities in the state of Massachusetts that have multiple districts. And all it would have required is that I give a call to see if those other districts had their distinct councils. I suspect they do, but I don't know the answer to that. And the other thing I would say to offset your concern is that obviously, or hopefully, there would be a liaison, I think, between both groups so that everyone was working together, that it wouldn't be as if it were two communities. But one of the reasons that we had to add the word junction to the arts council was because they wanted it to be seen as a distinct entity. Because there are different things happening. I don't think that's a bad thing to acknowledge that, that West Concord, not that it's not Concord, but there are some different things happening there. It's a little bit, it is distinct from Concord Center. And I don't, I don't think that's a negative thing. I don't think it divides us. I think it just makes us sort of stronger to have two different groups of people. And I can tell you, there would certainly be enough people in West Concord to fill this, to fill this committee. And I can imagine there'd be enough in Concord Center as well.
Maybe not. We are talking about quite a few of it.
I don't also think it has to be 10. Are you counting up this list?
I'm counting this, I'm doubling that list.
Yeah.
So a minimum of five on each council, 10, five on West Concord. And you'd have.
Yes, five and five, I agree.
So at least 10. And then you're talking about liaison work between the two.
Right.
I, to me, it feels, I'd like to try one and we find that it doesn't work. But I don't know, see my numbers.
Well, I think it would be helpful to get that information. I tend to agree with Alice that I think at one point, if you will, there was a sense that maybe West Concord needed a little special attention and guidance. But it seems to have so much energy now and there's so much going on there that I don't worry about it kind of getting gobbled up by the remainder of Concord. It is distinctive, but I think one could handle that, hopefully. But obviously, if there's a problem in terms of the state for doing that, then that sort of ends the discussion right there.
Don't we already have a local cultural council?
We have the Concord Culture Council, but it's not associated with our cultural districts. So it's a grant-making organization that has.
The Arts Council.
The Arts Council. The cultural arts, a small array of artists across West Concord and Concord.
This is a planning group. This group would plan events.
But I think to your point. It's not a bad exercise on our part to coalesce the many similar interests. First off, because if we're going to one or two, they're going to be shared interests already identified in, in other activities. And we started the evening tonight with the proclamation for 51 Waltons. I mean, we're really rich in our own.
And the umbrella, I mean, absolutely, there's so many.
Are the citizens being involved in this, which is always helpful and important? What other implications are there towards the town? Is it going to cost us anything?
No, it won't, it won't cost you anything. Again, it's only, it will only strengthen the, what's going on in the town. The idea is that it fuels the economic engine of arts. It creates performing arts spaces, you know, even in the pop-up style. You know, it makes a performing arts space of something that wasn't being used as a performing arts space before. It reimagines places, for example, the new church in West Concord. And as part of this, we've been working, my committee, but again, under the umbrella of this, has been working with Ryan Kane to create, we'll have a, every Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. concert series on, in July, for the month of July, and, you know, over the whole Harvey Wheeler parking lot. That's not been done there before. And again, that's part of this, the sort of ad hoc this. In terms of costs, this is going to be access to grants. This is going to be.
This can bring in.
Yeah. A meeting with Marsha and Elizabeth tomorrow, there's a grant we're going to be applying for from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for an arts and culture planning event. So same, same sort of stuff as I started with, that this will only strengthen the town and not take anything from it. Jane, you look like you were going to say something earlier.
Well, I was going to say two things, but you can. According to the MCC rules, the council is supposed to be the body that accepts the grant that you are awarded from the state for the two cultural districts or for one or the other. So there is a need to have a strong council involved in this. The other one is that our reporting on an annual basis, West Concord and Concord Center has to report. Those reports are separate. They're in the database as separate entities within MCC. And you are to report on the number of activities that go on within the, each of the districts. And that gets reported up through Massachusetts. I think the importance of that is that if one area is really demonstrating a strong sense of purpose and there's more activities and more people going to those areas, I think it helps to be able to enhance their position for getting future grants from MCC or from other places like the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. So if you have a single group, then perhaps have to, two subgroups, one focus on Concord Center and one focus on West Concord, because there will be different data collection needs for those.
Media body would be.
Right. I think that's a great suggestion.
It's not unlike the way the planning board has handled it with the West Concord Advisory Committee.
So you collect the data independently and submit it independently to the cultural district, but it's managed by a central body. To me, that makes more sense. I'm looking at this, your memo does say that according to the rules, that the partnership may form advisory committees.
Yes, it does.
So that's saying it's a requirement that you have one or two. It just is you may create one. So I'm thinking if we create one and it doesn't work, for whatever reason, we haven't figured out the right mix of people and the right length of the charge between West Concord and Concord. But my sense is I'd rather see one for the town. And if it doesn't work, advise it and make two, but.
Does this, do we, do we still have to wait to actually make a decision before I make that call? Or is your decision to have one or two subcommittees, do you think that satisfies? I just, I just don't know.
Well, I think why, we still have to know for sure, for sure whether or not there need to be two fully distinct.
The language here just says may establish advisory committees.
But this is focused on the creation of an arts district.
But it doesn't require that you have an advisory council. It said may establish an advisory council. The language in here says may for.
I don't think.
I think the requirements are local.
I think if a town has two zones or two districts, that you're in the same town, I don't see how having one council would be a problem. I mean, then you're a sole source, it's the same group speaking to, say, the rec department. I mean, imagine it's two groups. Or if it was three districts, it'd be three committees taking up town staff effort and so on. I mean, it's more efficient to have subgroups that support different areas of town. And then you have a central group that's integrating and finding efficiencies in, say, a concert and a performance somewhere else. And you follow the same procedure for social media, spreading the word. You're going to have, what, two websites now for one town? I don't see.
There are two maps, there'll be two maps. But I agree.
That's okay, but it's still.
I think it's a good idea.
Concord and cultural arts.
Sometimes the operations, synthesizing the operations makes, you know, of the actual, the council will free up the ability to have distinctive offers.
I think in the long term, it's a more efficient process.
Well, if you're laying out, you know, a series of events, you know, an art walk, a concert series, that there aren't similarly scheduled things on the same nights, you know, on both sides of town, and you really want to work together to have a town commitment to these, to the arts. But that's my sense.
What is the next step if we want to go over to the next?
It's one, we just need to.
I need to make that call.
Make that one call. And then I think that you're hearing consensus here to putting together a formal, you know, one committee if that's possible, made up of people from both, people from both.
And that's going to be the key, is getting the right people so that you've got input from.
Right. Both sides. And I think the charge will, you know, obviously come from, from the, from the direction of the MCC. But I assume it would be something that the select board would put forth.
Prepare. I think that would be the next step. I would say it's.
I'm going to suggest a little bit of fact-fund it. What is, what is the requirement from MCC? And I think it would be, I think, who's liaison to the Concord Culture? To have a conversation with them. Because if we're giving money to artists, it'd be really good for this group to be integrated into the council. Maybe, maybe that council gets warped into something different. I don't.
That was generally the point. The question that we raised, the idea is terrific, how we actually get it organized. we actually get it organized. And I agree with the single one, because I think there are resources in West Concord that aren't here, and there are some resources that are here that aren't in West Concord. It would be a shame not to be on a leverage. You know, the umbrellas here, the arts museums here, there's some, fifty-one Walden is here, and there's a lot of resources. And there's lots of activities in West Concord that happen that probably don't happen here or something.
Right.
If we can get these questions answered, and then get a draft of this for us to consider, I think that would be helpful.
In an earlier incarnation of the council, I believe fifty-one Walden was on the committee, the Concord View, Concord Library, and the Umbrella. There were a few others, but I think those were sort of the three, because of the Concord Center location, and clearly, they have an input in it and want us to be supportive of the West Concord Junction as well.
When you say in an earlier draft, do you mean a, a cultural council? The partnership that had to be created?
There was one a while ago when, when, when West Concord Center was originally designated as a cultural district. There was an informal group that got together periodically. It kind of lost some steam over the years, but it was, there were a number of organizations that were representing Concord Center. And the three that I mentioned are, are still, I think, interested in, in doing something to support the cultural district.
Well, I think to Alice's point, that we've got some, some fact-finding and then some collection of concurrent interests in town, because there's no reason to either reinvent or, or, you know, run over any other efforts. And then, and then draft art.
And so what would you have me do besides the call and, and the fact-finding, assuming you mean I can do that, or do you have to do that? I'll do that.
I'm happy to help, I'm happy to do that with you. We can work together on that. We worked on the West Concord Cultural District, and, and I'm happy to reach out to the Arts Council.
Okay.
You can also reach out to our elected officials of the city council.
That's very true.
I'm attracted to Emerson Umbrella, and also check with all the ones, you know, already trying to do things in this space. And it's slightly off point, my opinion here. And occasionally have your predecessor come talk to us about the plans for the chamber, what it was doing in town to try to promote business. And I wonder if we might try to invite Jane to come. We haven't had a chance to hear from her since she took over. It's definitely, it'd be really good if you could come talk to us about what your plans are and what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay. So maybe in one of that, we have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, but we'll, we can discuss when it might be most timely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Health insurance issues. This sounds like fun. I know I don't like to use the last one, so pull up those documents. I think of those. You came late, and you're here. Everybody have any problems yet?
So while you're looking, why don't we provide some background information that Concord participates in the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group, which is a consortium of fifteen or sixteen towns and school districts, most of them west of us. And we buy, rather, we collaborate to, we don't buy insurance, we deposit premiums and hire plan administrators to administer those plans. So this board adopted some changes in our plan design, I think it was five years ago, that, and that required negotiations with the unions at the time, and then the board ultimately agreed to increase the deductibles and copays at the time, was the major change. And the state adopted some legislation concerning how that, how that happened. So we're at a point in time where we need to change the plans again, for one thing, and also offer something new, that our consortium has decided to offer a high deductible plan, where the premiums are lower, but the deductibles are higher. And that's something we need to discuss also. So this is sort of a preliminary conversation, but you'll be required to make a decision later in February, and I thought it'd be helpful to have sort of an overview now. And Kerry manages the, this program for us.
Thank you, Kerry.
So you're welcome. I'm not sure what to say at this point, other than I'm Kerry LaFleur, I'm the finance director. And as the town manager mentioned, we have two different changes that we're looking to propose in terms of health insurance. The first is changes to our existing plans, and we're looking at making what we think are some minor adjustments to deductibles and copays. This will be the first time in five years that we've made any changes. We've been very lucky that we've, up to this point, or maybe up until about a year ago, have had some really good claims experience and have not had the need to look at additional changes. But we are at a point now where our claims experience is not as good as it was. Our prescription drug costs are very high, like they are with many other plans. And so a year ago, we, at the, the board of directors level at the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group, decided to propose changes to the existing plans, and we were looking at, at the time, to match what the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, had in place, I want to say as of June thirty, twenty seventeen. So we are about two plans, we will be about two plan cycles behind the GIC, but that's what we agreed to a year ago. And I did provide a memo, and you can see we're looking at some pretty minor adjustments. We have estimated that these will result in a savings of about, of about two to two and a half percent over what the increase would be. We are expecting an increase around ten percent, maybe even ten percent with, with this two percent savings. So it is going to be a difficult year, because we have to bargain health insurance, we do have to bargain these changes. We have initiated meetings with the Insurance Advisory Committee, which is a group of employees. We have representation of all employee groups and retirees. We had our first meeting last month to sort of set the stage for what we were looking at. We have our second meeting tomorrow afternoon. We would like to be able to implement these changes the way that we did five years ago, where we were just able to come to an agreement. We didn't have to follow, or we didn't have to implement the expedited bargaining that is allowed for under Mass General Law. We hope to do the same thing this time, but if it becomes necessary, you would be the body that we would have to come to, to get, to obtain permission. And so we wanted to put that on your radar this evening. It is a very tight timeframe. We have informed the IAC that we would like to, to not go that route. We have identified February first as the deadline for being able to come to an agreement, and if we can come to an agreement by February first, then we won't need to, to be back to you. We, we would be proposing that we would follow, basically follow the same requirements, where if, if we were to implement this, using expedited bargaining, the town would be required to provide a mitigation fund, and the mitigation fund is equal to twenty-five percent of the first-year savings. So we would like to offer that, like we did the last time. And we did, I did provide to you what that amount would be. It's very small, thirty-seven thousand dollars is what we're estimating. Once we have the actual renewals, we would have to go back. Or if we followed the, the state law, we would have to go back and recalculate. We would propose that we would go back and recalculate, but we're looking at about thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's not much of anything. The last time we did this, we provided a health reimbursement account. The savings was much greater. We would not like to do that this time, because we're talking about a small amount of money. We're hoping just to do some sort of reduction of one monthly premium or something like that. But that, that's what the IAC would, would take up, and they would provide some guidance as to what the employees and retirees would like to see.
Would this be an effect more for how long a period of time this changed? And is it anticipated that this will be something that will be reviewed on an annual basis, or every three years, every five years?
It is reviewed on an annual basis, based on the history of, of Minuteman Nishoba Health Group. I wouldn't expect that we would be looking at a change annually, but we certainly could if we needed to. So the other thing that we're looking at, as the town manager mentioned, and we've mentioned this before, is the high deductible plan. That is a new plan, so the bargaining requirements are different. We believe the bargaining requirements are impact, an impact bargaining situation versus the decisional bargaining situation, where impact, we're going to present what we're looking to do, we're going to identify what we think the impact is. The bargaining groups can look at it and decide if they would like to, to sit down and talk about the impact. So it's a different process. It's a, a lower threshold to me, to me.
We're offering another option, so we're not taking anything away and offering something else that might, the employees might consider. So it's a, it's not like we're proposing to take something away or increase its cost.
So it's not a negotiation, it's an education?
So we're not requiring to shoot interest bargaining. It's, we have to bargain the impact. What's the impact of offering you a fourth choice of your health insurance plan? The impact is probably not great, but, but we have to talk to the unions.
It would automatically become an option, even if they were uninterested in it.
Right.
And does that new option impact, since the, since the participants may, some of them may pick the high deductible plan, does that impact the other plans because of less participation?
Well, in theory, it could. We don't, we don't expect there to be a huge enrollment in the high deductible plan. And this is such a large group that, that it's unlikely, but in theory it could.
Small numbers, if it was a doctor.
Does the school committee have to also approve because it affects?
The regional school, yes. Not, not Concord Public School, because that, that is under your jurisdiction, but the regional district.
So what's the next step?
So the, the next step is we will have our second IAC meeting tomorrow. We'll see how that goes. We've scheduled a series of meetings. I think we have every Tuesday this month in the afternoon set aside, and we will meet as long as we need to, with the intent of coming to an agreement outside of the expedited bargaining process by the end of this month. So I will provide updates to the town manager, who can send those along to you, and hopefully, we'll just be back to you with a memorandum of understanding for you to sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, Carson. I'll post a review too.
And let us know, in the meantime, if you, if you read anything in the notes with the backup supporting information, if you have questions about it.
All right. So we're on to CCTV inter municipal agreement.
So we've been talking about the town taking over the PEG Access Program, Public Education and Governmental Television, CCTV's contract, it's five, three-year contract will expire next September thirtieth. And one of the requests from the CCTV board was that we enter into an understanding with the town of Carlisle about the equipment that was purchased with joint funds, some Carlisle money, some Concord money, particularly relative to the studio, where there's shared, shared resources, and how will, how will the equipment be used in the future. So I drafted a memorandum of understanding between the two towns, as to how, how the operation will work. And Kate, the Assistant Town Manager, Kate Hodges and I are scheduled to visit with the Carlisle Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, the twenty-third, I think it is. And I thought before visiting Carlisle, we'd have to do a review of this document, see if they had any questions. I have no strong desire to manage the Carlisle Television Services, and I, I saw one of their select board meetings where they were discussing with their advisory committee or folks about whether it would be better to have Concord provide that service, or they could do it themselves. Carlisle, we currently provide about four hundred thousand dollars annually. It's provided to us from Comcast, and we use those funds for PEG Access TV. Carlisle, I think it's about a hundred thousand dollars. So they could take the hundred thousand dollars and operate their own system, use the studio, the shaped equipment at the studio if they chose to, or if they'd like us to, to offer that, provide those services in the way they can provide in the past, that's okay too. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, so if they, if Carlisle decides to go it on their own, that would be fine with me. But we've drafted it as if Concord will be the lead community providing services for both communities, under certain terms and so forth. So again, the, the agreement is, will expire on September thirtieth, and we're beginning a wind-down process. They've submitted a budget for the current year, and we've asked for them to agree, we've approved the budget with certain conditions. And the CCTV board was due to meet in December, they didn't meet, so waiting to hear, you know, what, you know, what their decision is. But we, I drafted a memorandum of agreement between me and the CCTV board, and how things will proceed in the next nine months.
I know that there's been, in the discussions and sort of in parallel, a concern or, or question about the town's interest in, in the content that's, that's going to be developed under, and other than coverage, which is something we've long talked about, the increasing amount of coverage that we have for different boards and committees, meetings and things like that. And I know we've talked about establishing a, you know, a parallel path to assure independent development of content. Had you thought about that?
Yeah, I do, I agree. We've talked, to me, it would make sense to have an advisory committee of town residents, so that if folks wanted to see certain programs, or meetings covered, or, or programs developed, or had reproduced their own videos, and wanted to be sure they got broadcast or cable casts in a, in a suitable manner. If there was concerns about how to go about doing that, there'd be a group of citizens that would advise on how to proceed. And I would make an arrangement where if a citizen was dissatisfied with the determination of the citizen advisory board, they would come to this board for a resolution of any concerns they might have.
I'd like to see us get started drafting.
Kate has already drafted, and I've given her some comments, so she's working on it.
Because I think it's, I think it's important to have a committee. That's pretty much the way we do things around here. That's good. And I think, given the concerns that have been expressed about the P part, on the P, I think, you know, working to develop language and responsibilities and oversight and reporting, so that it would be transparent to the citizens as to how we are operating, and how we were sort of protecting the public's rights, or whatever you feel like. I think would be a perfectly great thing to get done, and the earlier we get it done.
I think, and I, Kate had, had it half-done, and was hoping to have presented tonight, but didn't have it. In two weeks, we should have it for you.
There's, there's some citizens in, in town here who have had a lot of experience in this. So I think it would be wise, we could get their involvement drafted, so we can, you know, try to expand the net points of view that get in here, as we craft this sort of charter. I think that would be, so if we could get a draft...
I think in two weeks, we should be...
We might be able to sit here and try to get some involvement. That's going to help the process.
I understand there would be no change in terms of how the usage of the school would be affected.
Yep.
Is there any...
And my, my hope would be that we would spell out exactly what, what Kate has been working on, is what the, what the staff would be responsible to do, such as cover all select meetings, all town meetings, finance committee and so forth, and would spell out exactly, if some people could count on what was going to be covered.
The non-terrible budget of the social, with, with the money we get.
It's one hundred thousand dollars.
For your responsibilities, and all that normal stuff.
Great.
So we'll spell that out.
And as far as the, the people who'd be working for CCTV, or would be Concord employees, would that change the insurance at all, or?
The, the fund would pay the, all the full costs, fully loaded costs of the benefits and so forth of those employees, which is covered now.
Would not affect the town budget.
No, that's right. That's right. And we wouldn't refer to it as CCTV. We'll probably come up with some names. We would come up with another name to represent the town operating the system.
Any other questions or comments?
So I'll let you know what I hear back when, when, after we visit with Carlisle.
I think it's been, we've done an excellent job keeping us updated in terms of the progress of this. I mean, this has been an ongoing process, and I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much, Chris.
So now the town meeting warrant, this is unfortunately your only opportunity really to, unless you want a special meeting, because the, this warrant will be delivered to the printer before your next meeting on January 22nd.
And it was extended, so you didn't froze until Friday.
Till Friday because of the snow. We, you know, chair extended the, submitting the warrant articles, and we did get one warrant article on Friday. So we, we have a, a meeting scheduled with the town moderator, town council, the chair, myself, and finance director to review the warrant, you know, every word of the warrant to be sure it's proofed and is worded properly. But for tonight, if you could, would check the, the order of the articles, if you see the articles grouped together properly, the zoning, and we have, Andrew will provide you an index that's probably easier to, to review of the 56 articles we currently have listed. One question I have to use, the finance director has proposed a, a different way of, of doing the capital budgeting. So we have a single article, Carrie, can you remind me which one that?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is like an omnibus capital appropriation. So there's a wide variety of, of investments that are proposed under Article 22, including fire engine and roads and the other capital projects. That's how it's done in many other towns, I've heard. We've always done the individual projects. Fire engine is.
I think this is a really good way to approach it, and the moderator's assurance that people that have objections can have particular capital expenditure removed and treated separately.
So.
You still list?
Yeah, we list everything. We would have a presentation, you know, perhaps on the, the more significant projects such as the land acquisition.
Of course.
So we, and we included in this warrant is a later article, which is the roads, roads and parking lot reconstruction, the standard roads article. So we have it in two places. If you, if you're comfortable with this omnibus approach to capital spending, we'll delete the other roads program, so actually lose one article and be down to 55.
Forty-three, you know, using parking lots and that.
Yes. So that will go away.
Thanks for remembering 23.
That's why Henry's got to stay for that. So yeah, after that, Henry's reviewed it, so that's on there.
And of course, if, if there are concerns about whether or not particular articles are legal, and that's handled by you, town council, the moderator and the chair?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So do let us know. We'll bring to council's attention if there, if there is any concern about the legality of a particular article. Let me just mention, in looking at the index, I see one citizen petition on, in the first 19 articles, one citizen petition in the next 18, and then two, five citizen petition articles toward the end. So I don't know, and that's partly because that's kind of the timing of, they get added as they came in, and I don't know if you prefer to see those readjusted so there is more balance. Few in the front, a few in the middle, and a few in the end.
Well, I think it makes sense to, to discuss 46 and 47 together, but I don't know that we need to, if, if the goal was to, 48 is probably something that we could.
Well, could be right. Forty-eight was one of the ones I had concern. My concern was two parts, whether it, the urging of the NRC is the town can urge, town council or whatever, but they've got sort of statutory responsibilities here. But my other concern is that the article itself is perfectly clear, I understand exactly what it was trying to do, but the explanation is, is a little bit different than what the article says.
And I'm sorry, Mike, you're talking about 46 or 48?
He said 48.
I meant 46.
Okay, that, that, now I understand.
And the, the explanation is?
Well, it just says to determine whether the town were urging NRC to have a moratorium on dog restrictions, that's what it says. But then in the explanation, it goes on and talks about quantitative evidence and that they're going to collect quantitative data and determine damages and corrective measures, and it gives them a whole host of things that it sounds like they have to do, which I don't think is implied in the motion, so I don't get over to vote about it. It's not, not an opinion about the, the basic motion, but those seem to be slightly different sets of instructions.
But I think therefore you don't have as much concern over 48.
Well, I've got concern over 48.
But I'm just saying, not, not in the same way, because, I mean, again, I think 46 and 47, I would suggest that we might want to put, keep together.
When you say keep together, you mean one after the other?
They don't have, or, or at least, yes, I mean, they're, they're similar in their, in their discussion, whereas the reflower more generally is that it's different from a reflower and.
Well, the only thing about the 48 that is a concern to me is whether or not the town has the authority to do this. I'm pretty sure, whether you can enact a bylaw.
So if you look at section three, it was revised from the presentation that was made to us, it narrows the timeframe considerably. If we are following the format of town meeting articles, it doesn't have a short explanatory box that goes with Article 48. It maybe doesn't need it, but there is a summary.
Several of the petition articles didn't have explanatory information.
So when you meet with a moderator.
This Wednesday. Moderator, chair.
You can, you can take action to change the order of the articles, but you can't make any corrections or.
No changes in any of the petition or the.
Right. Not the intent, but you can do any sort of changes.
Where's the, they could better do that.
I don't.
Town council, opponent, you probably could, but it has not been our practice. Petition articles intended that the petition board should bring this matter, leave specific matter before town meeting, and you have some flexibility to get it changed.
It's really not the order.
Right, right.
You can adjust it or if you have concerns or timing or.
Yep.
Is there any, is there anything that you can say right now in this, in this regard, or is there any, does this have to come up as a separate agenda item?
I think it should be an agenda item because then it'll lead to discussion, and I don't think this is the appropriate time on the agenda to do so.
But I'm not correct that Verizon withdrew, and so there's not at this point any effort on their part to, to have any antenna there. So it's kind of, it may be a point for the sort of future how it should be dealt with, but it's kind of a moot point at this point, and that Verizon is not seeking to, to put up the antenna.
Tom, Verizon's very much interested in locating both at the high school, their preferred arrangement would be a cell, typical cell tower at the regional high school and repeater at Emerson Umbrella. And we are at the point where they would like to see the lease. They don't want to go to a lot of expense hiring their consultants and that sort of thing without the lease. So it was something I was, Jane and I agreed we would discuss as an agenda item two weeks from now, because they, they're at that, I think they may walk away from it if we're not willing to, to issue the lease, but, but they're at the point where they would like to see the lease, so they know they've got, it's worth, it's worth their investment in this.
Where is the school committee?
And the school committee is, is discussing this tomorrow night. I had to say that what you'd have said, Mr. Redmond, is news to me.
Hi.
Jane, request for we to approve the inter-ministerial agreement?
That will come back to you. The inter-ministerial agreement on CCTV?
CCTV, well, it's just on our list.
So, no, eventually you will.
It's not there yet.
I think it's going to go through a couple of drafts. Okay, so now we're up to the budgets, which you have in the warrants is the requested appropriation of funds. Page... Beginning on page 12, three pages, four pages. And again, the Finance Committee set a guideline, $783,000 above the current year's spending level. My request was 1.145, I think it was, so we're approximately $400,000 off. We pared that down, eliminating the salary adjustment, not eliminating, but reducing the salary request slightly, but providing for the elections that we'll have next fall and some other kind of non-urgent matters. This budget does not conform and carry drafted in a way that has indicates reports that it's not in conformance with the Finance Committee's November guideline. And maybe we'll draw closer together before town meeting, perhaps some make further reductions and/or make perhaps still based on the governor's budget or something, perhaps they're willing to increase it somewhat. But right now, this budget is not in line with the Finance Committee's guideline by about $200,000. It was difficult to cut much further. On legal services, I've increased it by $25,000 first time in 15 years, and that may not be enough. The snow and ice budget, we did not increase the snow and ice account, and we probably should. There's a few other things like that that were... We've made some cuts, but I think we still may have seen some of those expenses. So I don't know if you have any further questions, if you're comfortable, if the board wishes that I cut further to get down to the guideline or perhaps see how the state budget looks in March and see some additional information coming on other revenue or something like that.
I think you've done a very straightforward job in reducing your requested expenditures. Again, I would say that some of the expenditures were adopted by town meeting.
Right, the sustainability directive.
It seems to me that... I haven't been up to a meeting so I apologize, they have discussed it that way, but there's certain things that ought to be funded in respect to the regional position that they have, so I'd be happy to stay.
I agree with you.
We've already discussed the police department had requested an additional officer.
That's been eliminated. And another item, it's $35,000 to operate 55 church streets, new building, we need to provide heat and cleaning.
Only for planning on using the building, right.
So that is in the budget.
I think the town meeting offered.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I appreciate the sense of company and how to get the even end of some painful.
It has been the case that the financial situation changes over time, or the finance structure can come back with revised estimates of funds that would be available. So hopefully that process can continue to do this couple of months anyway, hopefully reduce the gap.
We'll continue to see if we can identify some ways to get closer to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Chris.
It's Chris.
Public comment. Here's public.
Yes.
Please, for the record, identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Sheldon Hines. I live at 74 The Valley Road in Concord. In December, we had a discussion during the public commentary period in this forum about PCS antennas specifically, most specifically in the Emerson Umbrella. As you all know, a RFP was issued and the board was made to Verizon to allow them to enter eventually into a lease with the town to enter the... A cupola on top of the Emerson Umbrella building. And that... And so I want to speak further about that. And then I have six questions at the end. As you are aware, there are many people in Concord who do not understand why the town offered the Emerson Umbrella building as a site for PCS antennas. PCS antennas provide cellphone service as well as data service for your smartphones. There are several possible sites owned by the town relevant to Concord Center. There is no current scientific documentation of the exact need or the best solution to perceive gaps in coverage or capacity in Concord Center for cellphone service or data communications. The former landfill and the Public Works Lot on Kai's Road are possible sites. I am now asking several questions for which I really want immediate answers, if possible. There are six of them. First of all, does the town manager or the assistant town manager have the authority to rescind the award to Verizon of a possible lease on the Emerson Umbrella? That's question one. If not, does the select board have this authority? Thirdly, if not, why not? In any case, will someone please rescind the award immediately? Will the town award to a qualified independent engineer or attorney as soon as possible a project to review the possibility of using the former landfill or the Kai's Road site as the target sites for a PCS facility serving Concord Center or Verizon in lieu of either the cupola on Emerson Umbrella or the high school grounds? Lastly, a long question, will the select board and the town manager order the Historic Commission to review its prior decision against use of the Kai's Road site based upon the apparent need to avoid use of inappropriate sites which would hurt the interests of the town as a whole? And let me just make comment, I believe that the Historical District Commission was outside of its authority in denying that site. And I haven't heard any discussion, I don't know of any discussion that indicates that they actually were in conformity with the, you know, the best interests of the town and their authority. So that's my comments, other people in the room will probably follow up, you know, with other comments on other slightly related topics.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is that something you can give us a copy of?
I wrote it just before I spoke here, but I can, I can.
We can make a copy of it, just so we can have it in the record.
Sure.
So we have the six questions, yeah?
Yes. Is there any, is there anything that you can say right now in this regard, or is this have to come up as a separate agenda item?
I think it should be an agenda item because then it'll lead to discussion, and I don't think this is the appropriate time on the agenda to do so.
I'm not correct that Verizon withdrew, and so there's not at this point any effort on their part to have any antenna there. So it's kind of, it may be a point for the sort of future how it should be dealt with, but it's kind of a moot point at this point. And that Verizon is not seeking to put up the antenna.
Tom, Verizon is very much interested in locating both at the high school. Their preferred arrangement would be a typical cell tower at the regional high school and repeater at Emerson Umbrella. And we are at the point where they would like to see the lease. They don't want to go to a lot of expense hiring their consultants and that sort of thing without the lease. So it was something Jane and I agreed we would discuss as an agenda item two weeks from now. Because they're at that, I think they may walk away from it if we're not willing to issue the lease. But they're at the point where they would like to see the lease, so they know they've got, it's worth their investment in this.
Where is the school committee?
The school committee is discussing this tomorrow night.
I had to say that what you'd have said, Mr. Whalen, is news to me and to everyone else in the town that they are interested in both sites. I haven't reread this week's Concord Journal because it was never delivered due to the snow. But this is brand-new information that should be, you know, that really should be disseminated widely, that they want both sites. It's really.
I say preferred, I think that's a preferred arrangement, not their only arrangement, I think it's a preferred.
It's unbelievable. So I'd be glad to answer any follow-up questions you have. Out of the center?
This will be an agenda item on the 22nd.
Okay, I can give this to Andrew.
Thank you.
Can I make a copy if you want?
Yeah.
Others? Hello?
Melissa McBride, 57 Everett Street. Basically, I'm just here, I think I said everything I wanted to say for last meeting. But I put together just a few little packets for all of you, if you'd like to just sort of read some of what we've all been learning about. And it also includes a flyer, you may have already received an email from the Wireless Education Group. I know they sort of look up different town communities, et cetera, online and send out these... So this is for the movie, the documentary that I mentioned last time, that will be coming out on the 20th or the next day. Yeah, so that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Anything come up together?
Sure.
Alicia Voyageon, 33 Stowe Street.
And I'm Ed, excuse me, Ed Voyageon, 33 Stowe Street.
You can go ahead.
Okay. So I was here at the December meeting, and I'm also, while I said many things and I want to reiterate a couple of points in regards to the cell antenna, so, and I apologize, I just drove a long distance to get back here by tonight, so I wrote my thoughts down on paper as opposed to, you know, going off script here. Alicia and I are here tonight, maybe not surprisingly, because this topic is of great importance to our family. And as I mentioned before, we live at 33 Stowe Street, which is directly across the street from the umbrella with our two young boys, Cordero, who's nine, and Levon, who's eight, who both go to Alcott School. And as I mentioned at the last, I want to reiterate it again, that using the Google Earth Pro, our house lies approximately 200 feet from the proposed antenna site, and that's well within the 300-foot zoning bylaw that is there to protect us. Doing rough calculations, and I know I said this last time, but I thought I'd reiterate it, it looks like there are roughly 19 homes within a 300-foot setback of the antenna. And depending, many of those homes, by the way, would also have young children living in them. And it's likely that, although I don't know the census data, that somewhere at 50 to 75, maybe, you know, 80 or 90 people live within that 300-foot setback radius. And I think the setbacks obviously matter even more in close quarters. It's probably also worth noting that by my estimate, and it's hard to calculate because I don't know how many homes are in the Stowe Street condos, but I estimate somewhere between 10, 12, maybe as many as 13 of those residences are also within 200 feet of the proposed, or now the preferred antenna site, which is new news tonight. So I will bring this topic up because you asked me point-blank last time, and of course, health is one of our major concerns, and a lack of sufficient evidence suggests, that suggests there is definitively no danger. And I will point out a secondary concern is property values, because as this topic gains traction, it certainly is an issue that is now much more prolific in people's vernacular than it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago when some of these foundational choices about this stuff was being made, when, you know, when, maybe when, I don't know how long you've been here, Mr. Whalen, but 25, there you go. So a lot has changed in that time, and so I ask you to, that I think the standard of care, in my view, has also changed. And I would suggest that what you're seeing is, in fact, now there's more evidence than ever before that are, they're in fact potential long-term hazards to living close by a cell antenna. Now, we understand that there are limitations to what you consider in your determination, we understand that. But you also have to understand that we must and we will worry and work to protect the interests of our families and our children in this regard. And I imagine, and I'd ask you all to imagine, that if you learned of an approved antenna to be placed within 200 feet of your home with raising your children, if given the same evidence you wouldn't feel like we do, that we need to be heard and we need to seek your help. So I left... I left the last meeting a little unsettled around a few things, and some of the questions are similar to what Mr. Hines asked. You know, one is, who has the authority? Who has an opinion? And who has both? We come to these meetings and we share our point of view. But what concerns me, and when I looked at the list of people that we've had to interact with in this short time, I think there are eight that I could count, and Alicia could correct me if I'm wrong, that might have authority or an opinion. One is the Select Board, Town Manager, Mr. Whalen, Assistant Town Manager, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Historic District Commission, the Long Range Planning Committee, and I guess some kind of people that are responsible for Walden Woods. All of those have been reference points in some of the adjudication of decisions about locations of antennas. But one of the troubling parts of the discussion and the process from my point of view, and I just ask you to consider, is the lack of clarity or what appears to average folks like us, the opaqueness of this kind of decision-making process that led us to this point. And having attended the prior select meeting on the topic and listening carefully to the specific words that were said at that meeting, and some of the follow-up notes that we've gotten from Ms. Hodges, so it's left me with more questions that I'd like to go through. But before I do, let me, before I ask my questions.
Well, I don't really have much more to add other than I truly appreciate your time. This has been a very stressful and upsetting process, and I'm feeling a little frustrated that as we dive deeper into the process, as you said, I'm actually getting more confused on what our rights are, what's possible in terms of assistance from the town, and who exactly we direct our questions to, so.
So let me state clearly, so you all understand, we oppose the placement of the cell antenna at the umbrella. I am formally asking the Select Board to direct the town manager to rescind the RFP that was issued and accepted by Verizon Wireless. And/or to the extent that it's not the authority of the Select Board, then I ask the town manager to rescind the RFP that was issued and accepted by Verizon Wireless.
They're my bosses.
Okay. Fair enough. But that's where some of the questions, candidly, that's where some of the questions come in. Because at the last meeting, when we asked, so, this doesn't, this doesn't go to a town vote. Somebody has to say, okay, we want to get a proposal. And I use that freight train expression because it feels like that when you sit here. So did, I guess, so one of my questions, did the Select Committee instruct the town manager to ask for Verizon proposal? I don't know if that can be answered in this forum, but that's a question because it's not clear to me. And if not, and I did, and I did, to your point, Mr. Whalen, and I heard, I heard what you said at the last meeting, which was, and I think you said the same thing, you're exactly, this board has the power to say, let's not do this, and it will not happen. And so I'm asking you to do that. That's what we're going to ask you. And if that, in fact, is a true statement, when will we hear from you? You don't have, oh, this is the, this is the opaqueness in the process taking place. We ask questions in the ether. Is there a way that we can have a dialogue in some setting that stops the freight train?
A moment ago that we were going to have this on our agenda in two weeks. What's okay is about time.
That's clear, so.
They really can't have a dialogue about something that's not on the agenda, it's prohibited under state law.
I see, okay.
There's a lot of detail on a topic that might be of interest to the public, but the public didn't have fair notice we were going to talk about that.
Fair enough. So the process, the hardening of the process of Verizon is what happens in the background, and that's what concerns me. Because last time, we had someone in this room say, don't worry, everybody stand down, they don't want it. Tonight, three weeks, whatever weeks later, we hear, oh, no, no, they're really interested in that site. So it's what happens in the middle that concerns me. You made a point, Mr. McKean, to say, moratorium. We asked to rescind then to stop the freight train. This feels like, and I know it's not your intent, feels like the freight train. I feel like I'm missing something. And so we say another two weeks, fair enough. How much more do we harden the position of Verizon between now and then?
There's a lot of process that happens, even if we do nothing. They can't put anything in Emerson Umbrella or the school tower without a whole bunch of activities happening.
Hearings.
Open session with the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a town bylaw that's in existence about cell towers. That's not opaque, it's perfectly transparent. If this goes forward, there'll be a public hearing of this matter before the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's perfectly transparent and not opaque.
And if this goes forward, there's also going to be an independent consultant hired. So there's a whole lot of, this is the beginning, not the end.
I understand, but what concerns me, as has been said, and by virtue of the fact of the Select Board effectively not making a call, that if Verizon's hat, I'm in, let's go, then that goes to, the next adjudication point is the Zoning Board of Appeals, am I right?
And our understanding is that the Zoning Board of Appeals does not have the ability, they cannot listen to certain arguments, and that their decision-making is going to be very limited to only...
By state law.
By federal, by federal law.
But would, but would it not be an issue if we didn't even approach putting them in that position, Mr. Lawson? That's what I'm asking. Don't, we, I feel like this committee kicks the can down the road to ZBA and just says it's a process.
It's not kicking the can down the road, that's just a process in the town.
But did, did you consciously choose to open the door up to Verizon for the, for the, for the?
I did, I announced to the board twice, you said this was never discussed at a Select Board meeting, and I mentioned it in two of my reports, that we were going to issue an RFP, and then after the RFP results came in, I reported on what the results were. So I've mentioned it twice, and I informed the board that I was doing this and the general public. And we didn't hear any complaints, so we're moving, we were moving forward. And now we're hearing some concerns, so Jane and I agreed we would discuss this in a legal discussion two weeks from now.
Okay.
I just want to also make sure you understand, this board does not need in any form outside of public forum. We can't, as a board, discuss behind the scenes conversations that we got from the last Select Board meeting to this meeting. And several of us, maybe all, most of us are not up to speed on what has happened in the last three weeks because we can't, we can't all meet.
I understand.
We are a public body, we have to meet in public. All of our decision-making deliberations are done in the public guide.
If you were to rescind, so the process is truncated, for further notice, the, the award or the proposal that was put up to Verizon, in what forum would that take place? And what, because I understand what you're saying, Ms. Kaufman, but we don't, if this is the only time you talk, this is the only time we have to talk to you. And so if it doesn't happen here, maybe it happens two weeks from now, but when can we understand if you'll hear our call for action on a rescission?
We hear, we hear what your request is. Legally, I don't know what, we had very specific questions from Mr. Hines about who has the authority to do a rescission, what does a rescission look like, if, so I don't have those answers. And so I would ask, you know, probably the town manager to go find out what those answers are. And we get to hear about that most likely at the next Select Board meeting in two weeks.
Got it.
So we can't make any decisions between now and the next two weeks from this board about what action to take. But we certainly hear them, we know what you're asking us for, and don't have the answers today.
I appreciate that, and I know it's hard work, but from, from the position of, as a citizen, what is opaque is, I think, you clarified it for me, which is, we don't talk about it here, you guys don't talk about it after the meeting, so we're left with this uncertainty about these kind of, these kind of requests going unanswered. And it leaves, it leaves me still wondering two questions, who has the authority and who has opinions? Because I think both things matter.
So I think, but when is this scheduled as a public meeting? And that the rest of the town knows that this is on the agenda, we may bring in new voices and new options and new thoughts that we haven't heard in two times it's been brought up in public comment. Public comment is an oddity of the public, the open meeting law. You can tell us things that you want us to consider, but it's not really meant for deliberative conversation because we've been, we're not able to engage the rest of the town in the conversation. So we hear what you're saying, and we will take those questions and hopefully be able to answer them for you in two weeks from now. No decision will be made by this board, I don't believe, unless it's a special meeting, and that would be noticed if they have it.
Right, in which case you'd have the public access to it.
Thank, thank you.
We are under the same constraints that we cannot meet.
I understand, I totally understand.
I also want to point out that we are, I am not, we are not against adding more wireless communication to our community. We understand that people need coverage. Our friends all are complaining that their cell phones don't always work as well as they would like. So we're just asking for better solutions.
I think it's very important, we heard some suggestions from Mr. Hines that we also need to consider.
Then I guess I only have one other request before we go. Can, could we, is there a way to formally, between now and the next meeting? Because between the last meeting and now, progress has been made by Verizon. So how do we stop, how do we consciously say, no more, no more motion with Verizon definitively until we have the next meeting?
We are not going to discuss it again until the next meeting.
But, but you are discussing it, Mr. Whalen, so how do we stop that?
I'm not, my next conversation is with the board two weeks from now. The school committee is discussing it tomorrow night, so you might want to tune into that.
Okay.
Even though we can't discuss that much outside of our public meeting, you could be in touch with any of us anytime you want.
I think you did, we sent an email from you.
We have been trying.
It's always very helpful if you have remarks that you're going to make, that we had a copy of.
Right.
So we have, we made a copy of earlier.
I'll send my notes to.
Email to any of us.
Andrew or I have us, and he makes really all, yeah.
And it become part of the public record, and it become part of the public record, they will be on recognized as correspondence to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you.
Were you public comment?
Can I just add one more thing? I just wanted to point out, sorry.
One more time, I know it's Melissa, but just.
Melissa McBride, 57 Everett Street. Within the little packet that I gave you is some information, there are seven pieces going to the Massachusetts, bills going to the, in front of the Massachusetts Legislature right now regarding wireless radiation and how it's affecting people. So this is not just a Concord thing, this is really becoming a prominent issue nationwide and worldwide, so I just wanted to point that out.
We're alone in this, in this discussion.
Hi, Janet Benaniti, 35 Jonas Brown Circle. I'm going to change the topic for a second and circle back to something that's on your agenda, which was the decision with respect to CCTV. I just had a couple of questions, and I pulled the last time we talked about it. And at that time, Tom, you, Mr. McKean, you had, you had raised this question about there'll likely be first amendment concerns about checks and balances. And I think it might be a good opportunity to just sort of expand on your thinking about that.
Well, I think that's where Mike had addressed it. Obviously, you don't want the town controlling exactly what goes on with CCTV. You don't want them prohibiting certain discussions or forcing certain discussions, and that's... You don't want them prohibiting certain discussions or forcing certain discussions, and that's why a citizen's participation, a panel or group, would be involved as a protection against that. That was really what I was referring to.
So that's, that's the sort of the check and balance.
Correct.
Right, because I think a lot of the town, I think the early vote must have been to separate it for a reason. And the same way, we have an independent press, I mean, we have this independent body that has been monitoring the meetings, right? So you've, that, you've reached a conclusion that this transition is going to work out fine with the citizens' advisory board?
It'll need to be continually monitored, but I'm comfortable right now that it's a process.
But I think we're working on it.
Yeah.
It's an issue, there's no doubt about it, but there's two other components to PEG, which is education and government. The town has a very important role in making sure that citizens are informed about things that happen in town. And so, yes, we understand the public part, but the other side of that is, we really have got to make sure that we use this technology to make sure our citizens are as informed as possible about events in town.
Right.
And so we're trying to balance those things without infringing on anybody's rights on the public part of this to do, you know, there's rules about what you can do on television, but within that context, to do whatever they want. And the town has no interest in, in controlling it whatsoever, and we need to codify how we're going to ensure that that, in fact, is what happens.
Right.
So I think that's our challenge. Like, we're confident we could get it done, but we haven't.
Right.
And I think you've heard unity here on commitment to doing that.
And what happens with the videos that are already on that website from past meetings? Do they get archived somewhere? Right now, I can go on the on-demand section and pull up and take a look at old videos and that. What happens when this transitions?
They become the property of the town. Right now, they're the property of CCTV.
So they're archived.
Because...
I think there would be, I don't have, I don't know yet, but I suspect it would be accessible the same way they're accessible now.
Right.
I would expect that.
Yeah.
Right. That's certainly not our intent to remove them or to restrict access to anything that's currently underway.
Well, there's also a link, for example, League of Women Voters has a wonderful website, and they have a page that discusses how to run for office. I'm thinking about, you and a couple of me, I guess, are coming up for that. And that links directly to the CCTV website. So I guess as the transition is made, some folks have linked to the CCTV. I assume internally, there's a group that's going to be looking at this.
There's an operations part of making the transition.
So you don't lose, you don't lose the training that you did on open meeting, for example?
The goal is not to lose anything, if anything, it would be to enhance in areas that have been...
And there's nothing internal, like, the term internal isn't the way I look at it. There'll be a citizens' advisory group that kind of directs our, our team, our staff, to provide access or to be as transparent or as easily accessible as possible. So if our staff can't do that, that's, that group of citizens that are appointed to the committee will kind of let us know, and then we kind of, kind of boss of this guy and try to make this happen. But, and then in other outlets where the town provides access to information or your ability, like the light plant offers the fiber and access to the internet, there's no censorship going on there. It's, it's not monitored, it's...
It's a service.
Yeah. So consistently, I think the town's always been about, you know, being pretty open.
And I assume we'll look at live streaming?
Yes. Well, exactly. We're constrained right now with just two public service channels.
Yes.
There's no reason that we should be constrained.
Right. So the goal is to broaden, not to, not to limit.
Well, I just wanted to raise a question so that you can explain it to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment? All right. It's time for Leah Lee's on... Who wants to start up?
I had the pleasure of attending the latest affordable housing funding committee meeting. I think they were feeling a little pressure about trying to pull together something for town meeting, but there are so many kind of options and venues and various strategies to raise that revenue, they really weren't comfortable going in unprepared. Like, I think if it was about putting something out there, that was not the mission they felt that would be successful. So I think they're going to continue. I think they may ask the town moderator if they could report through the town body on what they've been up to. I don't think Tom's been attending, and I know Tom was there just the last meeting as well. And I think they've, they've really got a few options. They're pursuing, each individual on the committees pursuing different aspects or different types of revenue generation, and they'll report back kind of a summary of what they think the next steps are in the coming year.
I was impressed by their ability to kind of look at the big picture, because it is the big picture. And I think they want to make sure that what they're going to propose is to benefit the whole town.
Right.
And they really are looking at all the different options and...
And also the accountability of the revenue generation, because I think there are options where you could impose fees on, say, developers or, you know, at the time of a house sale closing. But then are town citizens really participating and a part of that process, not just with the funding, but then having a say in how we implement the plan? So, you know, very thoughtful of that, so.
Alice? I don't know what to do.
We had the Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee met on the third, and they went over the survey that had been done of online. They also went over a number of questions. Marcia Rattrick's going to be appearing at their next meeting on the 17th, and they wanted to provide her a number of questions that they wanted her to address and discuss. And I think that it's likely that they're going to be seeking to extend their time limit because they did get started a little late, and there's a lot of information that they're trying to pull together as well, so. But they're active and moving, and I think dealing that with Marcia, the discussion with her, they'll find out what some of the options in terms of space might be available and go on from there. And the Historic District Commission was supposed to meet on Thursday night and got snowed out.
I have nothing to report historically, except I would say that the Pollinator Committee is having its inaugural...
Yes.
Ah!
On Wednesday.
So despite the cold, there's a buzz?
There's a buzz. A hidden element of select board management.
Well, I was able to go to, lucky me, many of my occasions. The Long Range Planning Committee continues to move into its next phase, and we're waiting on various of the reports to pull together, but the first phase of public process has been really robust, and they'll be meeting on Friday, and I foresee the next, the next plan for the plan, the roadmap from where they are here and to the draft of the first iteration of their, of the plan. And then there'll be another whole lengthy public process for impact. The, I attended both the personnel and committee, which, it's always interesting, you know, we have the, we enjoy such an amazing group of people who work for town, and one way to understand the world in which they live in and work in is to go to the personnel committee because it's, you know, talks about the structure that they live in, and, and it gives reality to a lot of budgetary numbers that sometimes I, I worry that we are not personally enough engaged in because they matter. And, and we're doing, you know, keeping some of the incredibly talented people we have in town, in town, both senior managers as well as, as mid-level personnel, is, is no small pack. So it's totally useful to be there. Bingcom, I think we all know that right now, the town's budget is where the town's budget is, and I think Chris has trimmed that as best as definitely as possible, and the school committee is where the school committee is, so we'll go on into hearing.
They're still outside the guideline.
Well, I'm looking at Mr. Ron right here, and I'm personally aware that, yes, they are.
I'm a bit head shaking.
Yeah.
Definitely. Perfect storm.
And here we have Bingcom, so I really don't have to say anything at all. And then I also attended several NRC meetings, probably the most noteworthy, which was the, the vote that the NRC commissioners took to restrict dogs to leash only at Panket Tasse, which was a decision, as they described it, made both to conform to the rest of the landowners within Yethbrook Woods and also to, to be truly sensitive of the wording of the original request, excuse me, of the land and its intent. And the other thing of note in that whole discussion, though, that struck, struck me was that they've been going through very meticulously all the conservation lands that we own at the town, and we're incredibly rich in this department. And what was very notable is that they're not recommending dogs on leash. They're recommending dogs on leash, or voiceless cull, in most of the lands that we have. It doesn't mean that's set in stone, but I think that's a, we all care about the things we care about and the places we care about. It did strike me as a dog owner thinking, okay, well, now I know some places that I'm not, that I can walk on leash. I know more than I did, you know, several years ago, when mostly it was just, you know, looking for assignment, guessing. And there's clearly been a lot of time and energy put into this, and, you know, it's not a finished process, and I believe we'll be seeing them in front of the select board giving us an update. Again, we don't make their decisions, they make their decisions. So when they come to us, it will be to update us on the decisions they've made and the process they've gone through. But their votes are, they have a different jurisdiction, and we are not in a position to...
When do they come to us?
Oh, well, that's either the 22nd or the 29th, because we just, I have not set those agendas in stone yet.
You don't have the 29th on, on the agenda here. Are you scheduled for it?
All right.
The caucus is the 29th, so occasionally you've had brief meetings before that, so that's possible.
That's probably why I was thinking about it. I'm assuming we're going to want to talk to them on the 22nd, but I just need to make sure that everybody's ready.
Independent decision they reach, they should be recommended for working through a really complicated, charged set of issues, doing a thoughtful review. Very respectful.
Let's manage the venue, too. It may be a lot of participants.
Yeah, so the 22nd might make sense. Thank you for noting that. If they are on the agenda on the 22nd, we should probably move into the public hearing room for that.
When do we lose access to public...
What, after the 29th?
I will make it available.
No, I thought construction.
29th. It's our last day.
So the January 2nd meeting, that could go to the hearing room. I mean, you have the caucus discussion and this thing, much easier to say it now versus moving halfway through the meeting, so.
Yep. So here's the minute dates. Onto Ms. Ellen's correspondence.
Can I just say, I've had people let me know that the rec experience at 55 Church Street has been just fantastic.
Awesome.
The room is just really a great experience and accessible and just, you know, I think everyone's really happy to be there and enjoying it.
That was part of the mission of acquiring the building, was to have a recreation presence in West Concord, and I know some, because it can be a hike from one side of town to the other.
Right, yeah.
Well, and it's also that it reaches populations that weren't necessarily being reached in any other way.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence?
For the correspondence, we have the voice scout.
Yes, we do. Thank you for noting that. We do, we have several Eagle Scouts amongst us.
Oh, yeah.
And that is last page. Last page. Anywhere? We have...
I'm on your last page.
Thank you. Thank you for that quick wrap. We have been, well, it's always impressive when any young person changes the, sorry, the Eagles, the, because Eagle Board of Review, I thought of it as an Eagle Scout. I have obtained Eagle Scout. I always have a point of regret that my daughters left at Girl Scouts when they did and didn't get to their goals. But we have two young men, Nicholas Velasco Owen and Timothy Martin Dillon. Nicholas was, had been created the Board of Review on the 18th of May, and Tim Dillon was there in front of the Board of Review on the, on the 2nd of, and I'm going to miss this one, August. And so we have, we'd like to congratulate both young men, again, Nicholas Owen and Tim Dillon, on their obtaining Eagle Scout. Do I hear a motion? Does that require a motion? Well, we have that.
Why not?
Why not?
Sure.
Why not?
All those in favor? Aye.
So I'll keep this, be proud of you.
It's the most, like, Eagle Scouts per capita or something like that.
Yeah, like, two a year or three a year.
I've spoken at some level since, and the whole moratorium is Eagle Scout.
All right. I think I do need an additional motion to authorize the chair to sign and transmit that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Incredible.
So is it time to just make one note? We have still the, where are we?
We are committing nominations, but we can still be...
So I just want to... Admissed later. I just want to make a note that tomorrow evening, the school committee will have a very busy meeting. On the agenda, we already heard, is PEG access is one item on the agenda, and so are the marijuana. There are several petitions being out from our, from our discussions of this year's town meeting. The Board of Health and the Plating Board will both be coming to the school committee to discuss marijuana regulations, as I've been here.
Thank you, Alice. Do I see, hear any nominations? I believe we've had one.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Paul Ware of 525 Lexington Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member to fill an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2019.
Thank you. And we don't have, so we don't have any committee appointments for tonight, so we are now to, going to adjourn to a deposition for purposes of discussing man deposition litigation of lay contracts, not to return to public meetings.
Also moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, so don't worry about it.